To order, all members are present and accounted for. As is our custom, would everyone please stand, face the flag, and have your head here, and join us at so inclined as we say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sampson has COVID and will not be joining us this evening. So he's expecting to be back on Wednesday, but we'll see where that goes. So I would look for approval of the agenda unless somebody has an addition that they'd like to post or request.
I'll make a motion to the first agenda.
I'll second.
Quint on the motion, seconded by Joe Lynn. Other discussion. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. This is the time of year when we do our audit presentation. Mr. Steve Solverson from Smith, Schaefer, and Associates is here to go over our annual audit report. I'll turn the floor to you.
Okay. Those of you that don't know me, my name is Steve Solverson. I'm the principal in the Red Wing office of Smith, Schaefer. We're a firm about 100 people. Most of our staff are here, comes out of Rochester, because I have help from our Goon Valley office too when I do nonprofit stuff like that. With that, we were charged to do the annual audit for the district, and we're just going to go through the paper tonight, which is this PowerPoint, quickly. And your superintendent, Josh, had to suffer through a, what, two-hour drive, maybe it's an hour, I don't know. So with that, I'll start through. If you turn to the back page in the cover, so first thing we do is, we want to give you a summary of all the reports and everything that are in this book that you have, and what we issued, and what was the result of them. So the main item is our audit opinion. And our audit opinion is what we call clean or unqualified, which means we have no qualifications for any item this year versus in the past, we did have qualification for OPEP. We finally got our OPEP study done, so we have no qualifications. All the information is in there for OPEP, and has nothing to do with your books, just has to do with how we have to report. So that's one of the weird things with OPEP. It's kind of like Paratera. We have to put that in the government-wide, we call it, but it's not in the books. The other thing we had to do is, we're required by the state of Minnesota to legal compliance. That's where you would have all received a letter, you had to sign, and had to do with independence, you know, and decisions, stuff like that. And we had no exceptions there. And there's a checklist the state gives us to fill out. It's about this thick, and we have to do testing and stuff relative to that checklist, you know, like bidding and things like that. We had no exceptions there. All audits require we do an internal control review, which means we look at your controls and figure out, is there anything, you know, wrong that we need to report? We don't rely on them, because that would have more testing than what it's worth, but we do have to review the system. And we didn't have any exceptions there except preparation of the notes, the financials. So basically, we do the financials with input from Josh and the superintendent, and we're charged with responsibility to make sure the notes are right, you know, stuff like that. So we do exception then for that, just for that preparation. And every district we do has that. So with student activity now being reported by the general fund instead of separately, there is still some math requirements, and we have to test for that separately, and we didn't have any exceptions for that either. The audit committee letter is this letter here, and basically what that says is, in a nutshell, there's not a whole lot on the front page, but on the second page, it talks about the risks that we've identified and segregation duties, but yet we don't think it's material to write up on. And in accounting practices, there was a new Gatsby that came out this year. It didn't affect this school, this district. And then as far as estimates, depreciation, which is for the government-wide side, OPEP and pension, we get that from the state. And then, of course, the estimation of general and special ed receivables, because nobody knows the answer until later. Did we encounter any difficulties? No. Did we have any uncorrected or corrected misstatements? Those are audit misstatements. No. Do we have any disagreements? No. And do we have any other significant issues or findings and answers? No. We also had to do another audit, which is called the single audit. So once you get over $750,000 in federal funds, we're required to do a single audit. We did that, and we didn't have any findings or exceptions for that either. So with that, we'll get into the summary. So we always start with the ADMs, and you can see from last year to this year, ADMs dropped about 40, about 3.7%. So we should expect our revenues and our expenditures to drop about the same, but the hard part is, you also have inflation, so some things go up and some things don't quite match. We go to the next page, on page four. We have our revenues, all funds. You can see our levies are flat, same as last year, our state adds are basically the same too. If you look in the federal, it drops significantly. That was our COVID funds. And then you go over to other revenue, and you see a significant increase there. That's that insurance recovery. So that's about all there really is there. On page five, this is a pie chart of the same thing, just gives you a little different picture. Take us to page six. Party tax levy, not a lot of change there. Page seven is our expenditures, all funds. You see, if you look at admin, went up a little bit. That's mainly employee insurance, HSA, and that type of stuff. There is some fee for service too in there. Support's about the same. Regular instruction went up a little bit, $45,000 from the year before, but there's an $83,000 adjustment in there for Paratera that the state makes us post. So it's a revenue item and expense item. Goofy, stupid? I have no idea why they want to do that, but we do that. They make us do it, actually. The other thing to remember, if you look at those last four years, it also includes your student activity, which wasn't in there before. So it's in both sides. It's in the revenues itself, so in the expenditures. So it kind of moves things up a little bit. Look at vocational, about the same. Special ed is up about 200, that's salaries and par. Community ed is about 75, that's salaries and benefits. Instruction, about the same. People dropped, that's actually food service is what that really is, food and milk. Site buildings are up about 300, that's the state sewer-related expenses. And that's about it for that. Turn the page to eight. You can see our total revenues on our general fund were a little bit less than our expenditures on our, as far as expenditures, so our difference for the year was $72,000 decrease. And then on page nine, you can see the fund balance. Our unassigned actually went up a little bit, and our restricted dropped. So it's pretty much, you know, close to break even here. Onto page 10, food service fund activities. You can see food service revenues exceeded expenditures by about $38,000. And then you see the fund balance on page 11, and the increase there. Page 12 is community service. You can see we had expenditures and excess revenues of about $32,000. And on the next page, we made our fund balance drop to minus 110. So it'll have to be figured out in years to come. Then we have debt service. It dropped to around 45, but it still has a solid fund balance of $1 million. No problems there. And then we get into, if we take our expenditures and divide it by our ADMs, you'd expect a straight line here. And you look at administration and support, and it's actually a bit higher than the year before, but if you compare it to the state average in districts of our size, it's not quite as, you know, so you've got to remember, the state average districts of our size are the previous year, because 23 is not available yet. So if you look at our 22 number and the 22 number here, the other two numbers are higher than ours. So I would expect that when the 23 comes out, it will be higher than ours also. So no issues there. If you look at regular instruction, you can see it's a little bit higher than districts our size, yet it's still under the state average for the prior year. So we're doing good there. And the other thing to remember is, remember I said there's that Paratera adjustment in out? Well, that number is $80-some thousand, which in the past is like five grand. If I take that out, that number drops from 6051 down to 5973. You can see how fast it could change. So, you know, compared to the state and other districts where the ballpark, and the one that, the last page on page 18, well, it's not last, but almost last. So this is all the expenditures of the general fund divided by the ADM. And you can see it has increased some, but it's still right in the ballpark with the state average of the previous year. And we know what inflation was this last year, it was not kind. So I think, you know, when you look at that, we're doing solid. And then at the end, you know, so our general fund did drop some, but our unassigned is 2.6%, 387 out of 14, 15 million. Our food service did go up 38, so it's a fund balance of 160. And the community service did drop 30, so it has a fund balance of 110. And that's my report. I try to go as quickly as I can. I don't want to take any more time than I have to, and I will entertain any questions.
First of all, where can folks that, we didn't have an overhead here, so where can folks access something like this?
Josh has it.
It's on the board agenda. Oh, okay.
So you're familiar with out here? You've seen these things?
Josh has them electronically and the report electronically.
So if I go back to page 16 here on your district and school admin and support services.
Yep.
I'm measuring 2022 versus the other 2022s.
Right.
Okay. So we seem to be competitive in our support services and how we spend our money.
Right.
And classroom instruction costs on the next page. We are higher than most in our expenditures for classroom instruction. Is that?
For the previous year, yes.
For the 20, if I'm measuring 2022.
Yeah, then you're just a little bit higher.
And according to the state, and that's an all-encompassing number on the state of 6,000.
Right.
That's, we're dealing with Farmington, we're dealing with Minneapolis.
That's all districts, yep. So the state actually furnishes that data to us, and then we plug it in, so.
Team, what other information or questions might you have? We're at 2.6%, just slightly lower than what we thought it was going to be, but I guess it's there.
How many, I know you said you had a team of 100 in your company. How many people work on our audit?
So usually there's, let's see, this year there was one, two, three, four, including me. I usually come up for a day, half-day, somewhere in there, and review in the field, and the rest would review in my office. So there's usually an in-charge, a heavy senior, and then sometimes a new person. Sometimes we send four, sometimes we send three, depending. Some of it they do in the office because of, all the reports come off MDE. So a lot of stuff that we're checking to, of what Josh has done, we're checking to those reports, and we can do that in our office, so.
Thank you.
Do you have a state average of what the general fund balance percentage is for other schools?
They want you to get from eight to 15, but it's like, I don't have any districts from eight to 15.
That's what, you know what an average, I know what they want to get to.
So most of them that I see, like, I just did one this morning, they were at 10. I did one last week, and they were at eight. You know, most of them are 10 or below.
At 2.6, we're considered quite on the low end.
It'd be on the low end, yeah. And that'd be, you know, when I used to do Red Wing School, that's where they would run, somewhere around 2.2 to 3.
Okay.
You know, it's a struggle. It just is. So when you see some that are 10, it's like, how'd you do that? Or even if they're, the state says, well, they say 8, and it's like, you know, it's like, well, how do you get to 8, you know? I see a lot of them at 5. So we do 30-some schools.
So if you had to pick an average?
I'd say they're running around 5, you know, something like that. Maybe even 6. I don't know, they don't seem to run very high.
Many years ago, our goal was always to be like everyone else, and that lead to 15, but it wasn't realistic for us or anyone else, apparently.
No, in the districts of your size, it really isn't. It just doesn't work. The hard part is, is when you're going down in ADMs, it's harder to go down than it is up, because when you're going down, that's people. And when you're going up, you have to find people. When you're going down, you have to let people go. That's harder than going up. And nowadays, it's harder to do either one, because you can't find people, and then you don't want to let people go, because you can't find people. We're in the same boat. We're short 20% in our profession, so we can't, I've been looking for an auditor for eight years and found one. Nobody else is living right way. Too many old people.
I see the, wow. Your date goes back to 2018. Is that how long you've had a contract?
Um, no. I think we've only had a contract the last four years, three years, or fourth year. We pick up the data from the previous auditor and audit reports, we try to plug it in there. Normally, we only carry five, so if it was up to me, you'd go one, two, three, four. 2019, I dropped 18 out.
Okay.
We have some schools, we have 10 on there, and it's like, well, then you can't even see the graph. It's like this.
Sure.
So, but it is kind of interesting. But some of it, after a while, when it gets old, it's not really relevant, because of changes that have been made. You know, like, student activity is one. You look at that chart on your regular expenditure costs, regular instruction expenditure costs, and you look the last four, yeah, that's student activity. You know, it's nothing else. I mean, so if you went and adjusted it out, it probably looked like all the rest.
Sure.
So as you take out, you start looking at 100 here or 100 there, and you say, well, student activity is a couple hundred. We put that in there, and it makes everything change related to that all the way through here. So it's amazing when you take, you know, 100 at a time and watch what it does, so.
Anything else for Steve?
Out of the other schools that you've kind of been working at, have you noticed a little bit of a trend in their ADMs as well?
Oh, yeah. They're also more, you know, they're either flat or down. That's just the way it is. People have less kids, that's one. People are moving to try to find more populous areas for jobs, maybe. Thing is, you can find jobs almost anywhere now, right? But I think communities, smaller communities are struggling to get, you know, Red Wing, we don't have housing. There's nobody, there's no place for anybody to live. You talk to people at the SHU, who's the biggest company in Red Wing that takes care of the town? The SHU. Everybody knows that. How many of those people in management live there? None. Why? Because you can't find housing, you know, affordable, realistic housing that they want. So they live in Lakeville or, you know, stuff like that. A lot of them, you know, and it's sad. I don't know how you fix that. Your land is kind of goofy for roly-poly, you can't build on that, you know, unless you knock it down. So it's just like here, it's hard to get people to, you know, the economics to work out the housing and stuff. It's really, really tough.
Very much so a full-circle thing.
Yes, yes.
That housing has been at our forefront in conversation for 10 years, and it's, I guess it's good to know it's not unique to us.
No. You need to get some good projects going, you know, I was talking to some people about that, because I was asking about the town in general and stuff, and, because we really struggle, you know, it's like, why aren't we still water? Of course, everybody laughs at me, and I'm like, I don't know, why is that not, why is that not a valid question?
Well, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
And don't be afraid to call me in my office, you know, if you ever have other questions. I'm always open to talk to anybody, it didn't matter, so.
You know, we'll, just before you go, we'll kind of go off the board here just a little bit. Normally, board meetings are for board discussion, but as you can tell, we've got some populace here. And I was just wondering if anybody had any specific questions for Steve? I don't want to get into a forum kind of thing, but anybody have any specific questions for Steve on this, on the audit? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Please, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving down the line, we'll get into public input. Comments are welcome from students, residents, taxpayers of the district, people with children in the district, and employees of the district, and must relate to current agenda and not exceed three minutes. The rest of it is pretty forthcoming. We don't want to slander, we don't want to kick anybody. We just, anybody who's got any topics that are currently on the agenda for this evening and wishes to speak, up to three minutes. In the event there's multiple people that want to speak, we'll just have two or three people speak for the group. Does anyone wish to speak to the board?
Good evening. My name is Missy Claprick, and this is my 27th year as a sixth-grade teacher for Cannon Falls Schools. We've had a lot of great things going on in our district involving students recently, but I want to share some great work going on behind the scenes with our teaching staff as well. Teachers are typically not ones to tooth their own horns, therefore, I'm going to offer some shout-outs to these incredible educators, and I hope you really listen to each in order to fully understand the ways teachers give to this district without extra compensation. Shout-out to the many teachers who are here each morning and each afternoon, well beyond contract hours, planning lessons, differentiating work to meet the needs of individual students. If we worked only our contract hours, we would never have enough time in our day to accomplish the wonderful things we do. Shout-out to teachers who work all weekend, planning lessons, grading papers, updating gradebooks, answering emails, and any other aspects of their job that can't get completed during contract hours. Shout-out to the special ed teachers, who are writing IEPs, communicating with parents, prepping for classes, and doing due process paperwork on evenings and weekends. These teachers also spend countless hours with dysregulated children who need immediate support, which unfortunately means these teachers often go without lunch or prep time. Shout-out to every teacher who's spent unbelievable amounts of their own money buying supplies for projects, basic supplies and personal items for students who don't have what they need, for student rewards, and for classroom books for students to enjoy. This particular list could go on and on and on. Shout-out to the many teachers who spend hours at home writing letters of recommendation for students who are applying for acceptance into colleges, who are applying for scholarships, or who are applying for jobs. This list of shout-outs was just the tip of the iceberg. The truth is, we could be here for hours if I listed all the ways the teachers of this district give of themselves and their time for the benefit of their students. I sincerely hope you realize, appreciate, and value these sacrifices, because education is our greatest asset, and it can't be achieved without teachers. Our students are lucky to be in the Cannon Falls School District, where teachers continually go above and beyond contractual expectations. Please take into consideration that our teachers deserve to be treated as well as they treat their students. I'll end with a quote from physician, author, activist Helen Caldecott. "Teachers, I believe, are the most responsible and important members of society, because their professional efforts affect the fate of the earth." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Amy Dombek, and I'm a longtime teacher here at Cannon Falls. I'm also, many of you are alumni, I'm an alumni as well from the board, and I want to tell you that in the 27 years that I've been here, a lot of the financial issues that we're hearing tonight were the same ones that we heard about in my first years of teaching. And it's been the same thing over and over. Every two years, every so many years, we come to negotiations, and it's this same story about how we are at the same dollar amount, we're breaking even, we've lost money, maybe we've gained a little, and we're coming to this flat kind of space, place. I know that one of the things that was actually spoke to when we hired Mr. Sampson a few years back, was that we wanted to get ourselves better off, better off financially, and start making plans for where we wanted our school district to go, where we wanted things to be. In my 27 years, I've seen teachers go above and beyond. I know many of us, as Missy just spoke to, are going above and beyond to make this the best possible place for our students. I sent my kids here, and I had no qualms about sending my kids here, about not trying to find another job in another town, because I knew that this was a great place. We have substitute teachers that are excited to come to Cannon Falls. Can you imagine us up being excited to get up in the morning and come to our school? They're excited to be here because they talk about amazing things going on here. The respect, how we're able to actually teach, where our kids are actually learning, and you can see that every day. My challenge to you, especially those of you that are alumni, and this is as much as your school as it is mine, please get this on a better path. Please don't have another negotiation come along, for what we're hearing is that we don't have enough. I would like you to start thinking and planning for where could we get this place to go. There are some things happening in this community. We have housing development going on across the street. We have a new apartment that's nearly full with new residents potentially coming in. There's lots of positive things here, but it is upon all of you to get this on a better path, so that we don't have to keep hearing that it has to be on the teachers' backs to keep this place running and operating as amazing of a school system as we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
One more. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we'll close public input. Thank you for your conversation. Consideration to approve the finance report. Mr. Davison?
Well, there's that, or, yeah, I think you could. Buffalo as much into the camera as I can, back there as I can up here. I think you probably want later on transportation. What you have there is a cash flow sheet. You obviously heard from Steve, audit report. Like to thank them, it's not as easy as showing up and audit report on board media on Monday night. Like you said, there were four people in staff here during Monday, and then they work behind the scenes. But it's a lot of work in our office too, just to get all the information put together and tied through. And we talked about the single audit portion. That is something that prior to COVID, we're really not on the school, we don't get that much in federal funds generally. Food service is the largest normal kind of part of that federal funding that we get, but during COVID dollars, obviously that was increased, and that single audit was a necessary portion of what happens. So it's just a lot of tracking in order to make everything work together. So it's a culmination of our effort, but it went as smooth as I guess a root canal could go. So we got through it. In terms of the questions on that, I know in the agenda, there are the documents there. I can certainly do my best, if people do have questions on it, to answer what's in there for more technical things. That's why they do the financial reports for us, putting it all together, and to tie out the government-wide side of it too, for more in-depth things. I can refer you to Smith, Schaefer, and they can help answer questions as well. What you see here, again, is a brief sort of cash flow summary for the district as of current. Things to kind of point out there would be the project reimbursement, that's the 2022A on the top. What we've been doing with the CTE HVAC product that we've, as we've gone through, is we're able to earn a much better interest rate through AILers and those bonds, so we don't have to draw those funds, if we're able to have cash to float. We've been earning as much interest as we can there to help offset some other projects that can get done, long-term facility maintenance-type projects, whether it be the EFS, where the birds had kind of made their homes over the last couple of years, some doors that are, have been dinged up beyond repair, and some controllers for, controlling systems for HVAC that weren't in the initial project, but were required. So we really get quite a few things done, and actually, part of that would be the contract, or the concrete sidewalk from the high school to elementary, which hopefully will help out, not only in the winter, but hopefully keep kids a little bit further away from the road as cars go through. But some projects that we probably wouldn't be able to do normally, because the funding wasn't available, and because those project funds were designated for CTE and HVAC and for a building project, and we can't use them back into the general fund for unassigned, we're able to get some LTFM type projects or building projects done with those dollars, and not have an increase to anything, a levy or a decrease to our budget. So it worked out well, at least as well as could be expected. Another thing to point out would be Dakota County and Goodyear County taxes. We did receive our second half payment earlier in November. This is just the final cleanup that shows them as an estimate, they usually send us the actual, usually the night prior, maybe two days prior. And then really, it is, in terms of, some probably consider boring all the way through anyway, but it is as vanilla as it gets through to the end there. On this report, the February 1 payments are the debt service payments, and that's the other thing that would kind of stick out on this report. Generally, I guess that'd be viewed as maybe the mortgage payment, but it's a payment on our debt, whereas a mortgage would be monthly, for us, it's a biannual. The principal interest is due in February, and there's an interest-only payment that would happen in August, that you would see in our cash flow worksheet. Main thing to indicate, and we've talked about this before, but probably eight to 10 years ago, we were having to do borrowing based on antecipation, as the state was short on funds, and they were kind of balancing their books by slowing down the cash flow to districts. We're not in that position anymore, we're doing good in terms of cash flow and being able to fund ourselves that way. An important indicator too, when we talk about audit, Steve had mentioned the unassigned balance, you know, in that 2.6% or $400,000. Keep in mind, that's not the same as cash, the cash balance would include all funds that we have available for that, purpose of the debt services in there that floats in there, food service, community, and whatnot. So that all is the combination in the cash flow worksheet, it's not the same, or doesn't correlate to form balance. But if you have any questions, I can certainly do my best to answer what's in this report.
My only question was antecipation, and you covered that already, you don't want to be needing to borrow money.
No.
Questions for Josh?
I'll make a motion to approve the finance report.
Quinton, the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thank you. Consent agenda, items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can or will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Mr. Sampson always likes to recognize the resolution or the acceptance of gifts to our district. So I've asked the clerk to read all those folks or entities that have donated to us.
Looks like we have some three-ring binders, an anonymous donor for the middle school, high school student use, and $135 anonymous, stools for Laura Albers' classroom, $10,000 for the CFEF Eagle Bluff 4th grade, Shlee, $1,620 for the CFEF Roka Climbing Wall, 3rd grade, Catholic, $770, CFEF Mill City Museum, 3rd grade, Catholic, $600 for the CFEF White Bird Movie, 6th grade, Claprick, and $400 Main Street Pizza, Jack Carr, State Football Bus, $800 Fair Department, 8th grade STEM Skateboards, $660 for, from the Football Booster Club, Dundas Dome Rental, $400 for the volleyball, for the volleyball, for the fan bus, and $50 from Donald and Marcel Siva for the fan bus as well, and $100 Marcus and Cindy Schoquist for the fan bus for the state football, and $100 Wilbur and Becky Pagel for the state football fan bus as well. And we thank all of them for their generous donations.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on the consent agenda? Anything you'd like to discuss, bring out? If not, I would look for a motion to approve when you are ready.
I'll make the motion.
You'll in on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brian. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. We'll skip the suit report, we have no old business under new business. Consideration to approve the purchase of a bus for fiscal year '25, so we must have to order early. We discussed this at the last meeting very briefly, and I thought it was important to have bus personnel here to discuss the purchase, the needs of it, I guess. And although we own the buses, you and your mechanic are most suited to tell us what kind of shape they're in and if the rotation is necessary. Andy?
Yeah, right now, I don't know, we have a sheet, Josh, you just went over that with, thing we got for the years and the upcoming years to go. Right now, this year, we're kind of on our last bus of, that was an oddball. We've already spent like $6,500 on it this, already this year, and it looks like we're going to spend another $7,000 on it probably, if we don't order a new bus. That's just that one bus, and that's the worst one that we have, you know? Obviously, we have 15, 16 different buses, and, plus all the vans, and... So if you were going to skip a year, I wouldn't skip this year, I'd skip next year, because the buses behind it are in better shape. That's what you're trying to do, but otherwise, we have a schedule where we're trying to keep everything on a 15-year.
Yeah, so there are currently 18 buses in the fleet. We have, years ago, kind of got behind a little bit by helping to save maybe some funds in the budget by not purchasing a bus, and it just kicks the can down the road a little bit. And we got to a spot where we needed heavily leasing, at one point, we would have seven, eight buses on lease. We've been trying to convert over to having buses replaced on average every 15 years. It seems to be about, I mean, it's still a lot of years on a bus to go through, especially on the gravel roads that we have, they do take kind of a beating, but to replace the buses every 15 years, what we're working towards is purchasing one bus every year while having one bus on lease, so through each, in a 15-year cycle, you replace all 18 buses in that time. We have seen buses' price increase dramatically over the last couple of years. We used to budget about $80,000, $85,000 for a bus. The last one we got was $124,000, and the estimates on the ones that we are looking at for $25,000 are between $132,000 and $140,000 to purchase. We used to be able to lease, a five-year lease, about $18,000, $19,000. We'd be looking at about $25,000 to $28,000 to lease one now. The last lease we have is a three-year lease, the last, the most current lease, it's a $44,000 for three-year for that bus. The bus for next year for fiscal '25 is scheduled to be a leased bus, so in terms of budget hit, it'd be estimated about a $45,000 hit to the budget. And I think when Andy had brought it to us, the reason needing to maybe start coming in fiscal '24 to talk about that '25 budget is it's almost a year or more.
Right now, normally, if we ordered a bus right now, we would get it just in time for school to start next year. Well, right now, well, it's probably later than that, because now it's been three weeks or whatever. They said it'll be a year until our next bus shows up, if I order it today. They're a year behind at the factory because they can't find no one to work.
How many routes do we have?
We have 11 bus routes.
We have 11? And we have 18 buses?
We have a lot of activity buses. And then if something goes down, we pull the activity buses to cover the route buses.
Are things different for activity buses as far as the safety qualifications versus route buses?
No, we just like to use the nice-looking buses when you go to other towns.
We try to keep the activity buses on activities, as much as we can, so they look decent, and not all beat up like the route buses.
We only have one route that does not go rural, otherwise, everything is rural, and those buses get beat down, and so we keep those activity buses for activities, keep them nice.
But sometimes we got buses broke down, so we have to use them, and then... So they don't, they're not always just sitting there, there's always, obviously, there's always something broke down, so... There's either one or two buses that are used out of the, out of the nice buses that... But we try to use the same ones, you know, so we can keep the... The 14, the football bus, we never send that out on a route, you know? We just keep that for sports.
Being that, being that all of our, the majority of our buses go on rural routes, about how long on average, let's say if we started with a brand-new bus, how long would it be before we start throwing money at it to keep it functioning? Like, how long does it last?
On a brand-new bus? Probably the first five years are pretty minimal. Four or five years, depends on how hard someone is on the brakes. And then after that, it's just, it just starts a money pit. And we used to have, keep our buses till they were over, we had some over 20 years here when I started, and it was just crazy how much money it would take to keep, because then, then we'd get into motors and transmissions and stuff. If we're getting rid of buses on our, on our new thing that we've been working on, every 15 years, so far, we haven't had to put any motors or transmissions in those buses. And we're just getting to that part now of getting buses that are that old. It took us all these years to get rid of all them other buses that were older than 15 years old. So you got to kind of look at it, whether you're going to spend more money down the road and always have breakdowns, you know, or whatever, or you keep the fleet a little bit newer, and you really don't hardly have any breakdowns that, you know, we actually got to go get to them yet. We can usually always make it back.
What we do is, when a route bus is ready to be retired, then we usually pull our oldest activity bus and put that one then on the road to replace.
And we were talking before, we're actually like short a bus.
Yep.
Is there ever a reason to believe that we need less buses than maybe we once did? Just with, thinking with the parent line or the drop-off, people that are dropping their kids off, and maybe more vans, and the cost of buses being higher, and I know rural routes are tough in a van at times. I live on a road that doesn't work very well for vans. But is there ever a reason to believe that we could make an adjustment like that?
So, so right now, and correct me if I'm wrong, that with our vans that we have running, you actually have some vans that are doing three routes.
Two to three routes a day.
So you have kids showing up tremendously early.
Early, on time.
And on time, and way late. And if you start doing that with the buses, we're going to end up with that same situation.
And you're talking about the housing boom, and you're talking about this new apartment building that, who knows how many students are going to be there? We might have to do double routes, just with the buses for, to just even take care of that building over there.
See, here's, here's, one of the problems is, yeah, a lot, there's a lot of days where you could fit 15 more kids in each bus, or 10 kids, it just depends on the route. But the days there is no activities, or no sports, or no practice, there has to be a spot on that bus for them to get home, and on those days, we got a couple buses where we can't even fit all the kids in there. Sometimes we got to come out with another van and take some kids off that bus. So you can't just say, okay, we're gonna, say you're going to take a bus out of the situation. When it comes to those days, you'd never fit those kids in there on those days.
If those kids signed up to ride the bus, you got to have a spot for them.
You got to have a spot, even though they only maybe ride once a week.
Sure, and adjust on a daily basis is impossible.
And more drivers, certainly get that too. And then, a question on the lease too, so three-year lease, and we turn it back in? Do we have the option?
No, so leases are totally different in a school district. For instance, we leased that roof on the elementary school, so everything, we owned it at the end of it. It's just a mechanism for financing for us.
Once we pay the last payment, it's ours to keep, we don't like to have to pay extra, it's already, it's ours after the last payment.
Thank you.
So we have this budgeted right now, so that's why I'm recommending approval of this.
Well, this is for fiscal '25, we want to approve the budget for '25, but it'd be in fiscal '25.
You're the transportation liaison, you're making that recommendation.
Yes, you don't want to fall behind.
So out of the 18 buses, two are typically in the shop, 11 are needed for routes, so have the other four or five sitting there as activity buses?
Yep.
In general, and those are replacement. How often would you say those activity buses are being replaced to go out and run routes?
At least once a place a week.
It is that one.
Well, we really don't have any spare buses, so, so we don't, we just steal them out of the activity pile. So there's always one in the shop, sometimes there's two that are in the shop. So there's two, so then we have three activity buses left for, but then there's times that we need five buses on a certain day, like one or two days a week, just sometimes there's, all five buses have to go. Well, we just got to, we got to fix them buses no matter what it takes, just so they're ready, and then... We've always done that, I don't think we've ever missed an activity because of a, because of a breakdown.
I could just back a few minutes.
That's what you're talking about, fall behind. That's what you're going to have, fall behind.
You don't want to fall behind.
And our district is the only district that you're servicing, or your shop is servicing? Yeah. Okay. Okay.
All the problems that they talk about with repairs and whatever, you just multiply that going down the road.
Yeah.
Well, for sure, I mean, if we've got that many buses, then we're just, you're just asking for it.
Strict, strict safety requirements, and for good reason, we're hauling very precious cargo.
Yes.
And things will just keep getting more expensive, because the government just keeps putting more rules on the emissions of everything, just like your car. Your car would probably cost you $6,000 more than it should because of emissions. Well, a bus is like $13,000 more, and that doesn't last through the life of the bus. Those, those emission things wear out before, before, even before the 15 years. So there's always expenses, the biggest expenses are emissions, that usually, which goes around with the bus.
And I'll just throw one more thing out there too. Again, if anybody would be interested in getting your license, you know where to find me.
There's a lot of people in here.
So basically, our three options are to do nothing, to lease one which was running at?
The last one's $44,000. In order, on the schedule we have, the fiscal '25 would be to lease.
Okay, or to purchase one, all right.
Just, just for, we forgot, folks who maybe live in the city, like the schools in the cities and stuff like that, they obviously have buses that don't go on rural routes. Do their buses last quite a bit longer? Do they spend less money on buses than what we do?
They actually have the problem with salt up there. Salt and magnesium chloride, what they spray on the road, that actually eats stainless steel. So their buses will rot out even faster than ours, because of, you can just imagine, there's salt being dumped every single day up there, no matter, because everyone's driving 80 miles an hour in the cities, and they just keep dumping out chemicals on the, so those bus, those, those contractors are having a lot of problems with rust.
Two things that may piggyback a little bit on Luke, in terms of, I think you're talking about condensing routes or whatever. Two things in this district that we do is, we transport everybody with, even within two miles, we wouldn't necessarily need to do that. We consider the Highway 19 as maybe not the safest way to cross, so we transport all kids. The other one is that all the routes are under an hour. We could extend the time you're on a bus to shorten, or to squeeze them in, but then you're talking to a kid having a full day of school plus two hours plus of transportation.
Well, what's your pleasure? I think we've had some pretty good discussion on this. You're making a res, a recommendation, did that turn into a motion?
I will make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a bus for fiscal year '25, right?
Right.
I'll second. Luke has seconded that. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval for a bus purchase for fiscal year '25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie, thank you. Consideration to approve a music trip to Chicago. I see Mr. Legbold is, is back there. I'm going to force you to stand up by the Minnesota flag, just in case people want to see you on TV.
Okay.
Here? That's fine. You can turn around and have face on, have face hammer. You're good. Mr. Legbold, you, you're here to promote a music trip to Chicago.
Correct.
I'm handing it over.
Okay. This is very much like many trips that we've taken in the past. Three days, two nights trip to Chicago, seeing historical things, musical things, having a little fun, getting teenagers on a bus. And the music activity fund, which the students have raised money for, covers the cost of the trip. And it's during our spring break, so it doesn't run into any conflicts with classes or anything like that.
How many do you anticipate will go?
Between 40 and 50.
How many chef rooms will you have?
Bare minimum of four.
Is that all that's needed?
We can always use a few more, but.
Just curious, yeah.
Yeah. Couple teachers, couple parents.
Mike, will anybody turn down for funds for lack of funds to make this trip?
Uh, no. We usually have, that's a great question. We usually have a little bit in the music activity fund and then we also get private donations from some nice people in town to kind of help if people have difficulty paying their fare.
When was the last trip you made?
Two years ago to Branson. And the cost of everything, as we all know, has gone up quite a bit. So we were originally hoping to go to Memphis and, well, the cost of everything has doubled in some cases, so we had to kind of downgrade our expectations for how far we could go.
Well, I got to go on this trip when I was a junior grade to Chicago, so it was a lot of fun, so.
Very good.
I'm supposed to say it was very educational.
Sorry, educational, yes. There was no screwing around.
It should be, it should be both. Very enjoyable for the students and actually I enjoy it a whole lot and also educational.
Out of the band and the choir, participation-wise, how many, like, do you think everybody's like, yep, I'm going?
No, it won't be everybody. So let's see, I can't remember how many people are in the, are in the high school choir 30th or so, and then there's 56 people in the high school band. So not everybody is going to even want to go.
Sure.
So it's those who wish to.
Other questions for Mr. Legbold? If not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion.
To approve the music trip to Chicago.
Correct.
Motion by Joel Lynn, seconded by Katie.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the music trip to Chicago during spring break, March 22 through 24, 24, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration to approve the updated '23-24 winter coaching list. Reed?
Yeah, just wanted to bring this back to your attention here. From October, I believe, when it was approved, a couple of it is just re-leveling based off what we're doing for our basketball programs. And then one add new there as a volunteer for one act play. Any questions that I can answer?
No questions? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the updated winter coaching list.
Actually, so on the seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball, we're just deciding to?
One coach will play back-to-back.
True.
So that means the practice, they'll practice all together?
Potential of a change there, of doing a back-to-back practice.
What are the, do you know offhand the numbers of 17?
No exact numbers. 22 in that group in junior high. There are seven in the eighth grade. It'll be four kids roughly that'll end up playing the eighth grade. So ends up being 11 on each group. In the past, we would try as much as possible to get, you know, double headers when we could play and we had the numbers. When you've got 15 and 20 kids on a team, that's easier to do. 11, especially in junior high, is a little bit easier to stay at one game because most days you don't have all 11 showing up. We'll play them back-to-back. Most of our games, all through the HBL for junior high, are scheduled back-to-back, a 430 and a 545. Ross, more than capable of covering that many kids. He coached a group of seventh graders, just 25 in that one group. And it runs it more, far more efficiently than I could on a 15 guy varsity practice. And he's pretty good at it. But we're looking at scheduling practices there so they go back-to-back as well. So seventh grade would come in, he'd practice them. He'd come practice the eighth grade. And then same with the games, he'd coach them back-to-back. Not ideal, but there's not a lot of people just jumping out to, to want to coach.
But that is the reason, because we can't get another coach to help?
Correct.
Yeah. I just, my hope is we don't push Ross off eventually too because he's overloaded.
No, no, same, same too. I always said that he's probably forgotten more about basketball than I'll know. He's a great resource. But like Allison, if someone's interested, I got my email.
And then on the girls' basketball, we're just varsity, C squad and eighth grade. Correct.
Is there a reason there's no JV then?
Numbers.
Just the numbers.
Just don't have it.
Right.
So now we've got two potential employee groups. You've got the bus drivers just in case and we can always use more help on the coaching staff. What's that like, huh?
Sign up sheet up.
As you're walking out the door, you can let Allison know. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the winter coaching list.
Motion by Clint. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joel Lynn. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the updated winter coaching list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Informational items. Next, next meeting is our, is that our truth and taxation, the next meeting, the 18?
Yes.
Okay.
So only meeting of December.
Is it?
Yep.
Yep, fine for me. So other than that, a public hearing, if there's anything that you'd like to add to our meeting, our next upcoming meeting, please contact either Lori or Jeff on the propriety of adding it and we can do it if you need. Okay?
This question, maybe Lori's the best for this, but we talked about doing a survey for the school calendar year. Is that, I didn't see the calendar is on in a future meeting or maybe our next meeting?
It's not on the next meeting.
Okay.
I just keep it there as a placeholder so we don't forget to do it. I don't know, Tim, where it's surveyed?
Jeff was going to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I would expect that calendar in, end of January, hopefully.
Okay.
Change the survey serum later that night.
Yeah.
Team, is there anyone else that'd like to speak about anything?
Just like to thank our amazing teachers for all your work and for making it out tonight and pick the seal off.
Yeah, thanks to all. Okay. No other input? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Clint on the motion, seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are.